Jern. Oh, you're good. Take two. Do you have one of those little thingies? Tell me when. Are we just going?
Oh, no, sorry. There was just no audio there for a second, but it's.
Gotcha. Okay, take three. Good evening, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It's Monday, October the 17th, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Bobby Walker of Bobby Walker Ministries. Ministries. Good evening. Good evening, Bobby.
Good evening, everyone. How are we doing?
Good, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thanks, everybody, for being here. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful, beautiful day. Every day is beautiful because you have made it. Thank you for our city council and members here, and may it be a great discussion and may we come out being completely thankful and grateful that we were able to do this, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. And before you go, I just wanted to ask you if you could tell us a little bit of how your tournament was this year, and what's coming up next year?
It was beautiful, you know, to see people from all over the world come into a beautiful city and and just enjoy the basketball tournament. The night before is our community leadership award that we do. We've been asked by four different cities to come to their city and imitate what we do here in South Haven. Year before last, it was Bronson Nurses. This past basketball tournament was the school teachers. Thank you, Latisha, that represent all school teachers. Next year is cancer awareness. We got different people who have had cancer to support them. We give them $5,000. I just say thank you for being there. So we got good plans next year. Thank you for allowing us to do what we do in South Haven. So proud of you guys.
We're proud of you, and thank you for what you do every day. So thank you. All right, and now if you're able to join me for the pledge of allegiance. All right, roll call. Megan.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock. George Sleeper.
Here.
Latisha Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here.
Make a motion to excuse Councilmember Schlock.
Second.
Motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Schlock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. He is excused. And that takes us to the approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion, second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's approved. Consent agenda items A through K.
Mayor, before you get to a first and a second, I did want to let you know I did pass out an updated revenue and expenditure report for the quarter. As we noted, we did get an email about this, but we did have the variance, positive, negative was off. So I have given you all an updated sheet, and we will also be putting the updated report into the packet. My apologies for that.
Okay. Very good. We've got a motion. We've got a second. If there's no other discussion, we need a roll call.
We need a motion.
Oh, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through K.
I'll second.
All right, now, anything else? Otherwise, roll call.
Arnold.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. That takes us to new business. We're going to be asked to approve some special event applications. And let's just do all. We'll do them individually. Special event application 2022-23, which is the Blueberry Craft Fair 2023, to be held on August the 11th through the 13th, 2023, at Stanley Johnston Park.
I'll make a motion to approve special event 2022-23, the Blueberry Craft Fair 2023.
Second.
Motion, second. Kate, anything new or exciting here?
Nothing new or exciting. This is similar than what we have done in years past. Kathy could not make it tonight. But what we do have is a number of just similar from last year, scheduled for August 11th through the 13th. We'll have both arts and crafts with 150 to 175 vendor booths, which will include food and vendors, food and beverage vendors, but there will be lots of free space for nonprofit organizations to display information. They will have overnight security and portable restrooms to be provided. They'll be setting up on Friday and cleanup on Sunday.
Very good. Any public questions on this one? Council questions on this one? And this is next year's, all right? It's very, so thanks for getting that early. Motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's approved. Next, special event application 2022-24, which is the All Crafts Fair 2023, to be held September the 1st through the 3rd, 2023, at Stanley Johnston Park.
Make a motion to approve special event application 2022-24, the All Crafts Fair 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second. All right, Kate?
Again, this is the 46th Annual All Crafts Fair. This is a juried event. It will be held September 1st to the 3rd, and it's similar to what has been held in previous years. We will have crowd fencing out there to help contain the event. They'll have about 150 to 175 vendor booths, and they plan also on having overnight security and portable restrooms. Again, setup times will be on Friday and cleanup will be on Sunday.
Counsel, or let's see, public questions first? Nothing. Counsel, nothing. Motion, second to approve special event 2022-24, which is the All Crafts Fair 2023. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Approved. And finally, special event application 2022-25, which is the Halloween Downtown, to be held October the 23rd, 2022, from 2:00 p.m. till 8:00 p.m., to include a costume pet parade, a downtown candy crawl, and a visit from the Headless Horseman.
Make a motion to approve special event application 2022-25, the Halloween Downtown, to be held on October 29th, 2022, from 2:00 to 8:00.
Second.
All right, motion, second. Kate?
Yep, so the Visitors Bureau is putting this together. It's a really neat little event with the costume dog parade. This year, instead of going down Phoenix, they'll just be circling the block. They are also planning on a small parade that will start on Water Street and then heading east on Phoenix. They are asking for police escort, and staff have had a chance to review this. They have no issues.
Perfect. Sounds like fun. It always is. Public questions on this one? Council questions on this? Nope.
Parade, Kate, the parade, is this a kids' parade, kids' costume parade, an adult costume parade?
It's not necessarily typically adult, but as to what's in the parade, I think they're trying to find anybody who wants to be in the parade, so it's a fun parade.
So not just pets?
Not just pets. No, there's a pet parade that goes around the block, and then there's a separate parade that goes on Phoenix Street.
Gotcha. Okay.
Two parades for one.
There you go. Looks like you just volunteered.
Yeah.
All right, we've got a motion, sorry, motion, second to approve special event application 2022-25, which is the Halloween Downtown. Coming up in a few weeks, on October the 29th, from 2:00 to 8:00, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's approved. All right, next, I'll read this out, and then we'll discuss it. City Council, we ask to introduce a package of ordinance amendments addressing the operation and licensing of food trucks in the city. And I think I'm going to do what I did before. I think before we officially get into it, I'm just going to throw out to this group. I personally feel that we haven't had a chance to discuss this. We just, you know, I think the concept of workshop was thrown out. I just don't feel like it's still ready. But so before we discuss, I will throw it out to the group to get your thoughts. Joe?
I think we need to have more of a discussion on it and have a discussion among city council. And I think a workshop might be appropriate. It'd be a better way for us to discuss this more in depth than where we're at right now.
I would tend to agree. I'd like to see maps put up. I'd like to see kind of the pros and cons, the whole thing kind of laid out so we could all weigh in on it rather than doing it at a regular meeting. So that would be my preference. Any other thoughts or ideas?
Yeah, I would agree. We all had some questions. I remember Latisha had some questions about the fees. Steve mentioned his concerns about the central business district, and we did get that addressed in what we have in front of us. But I had questions about them in the off-season. You know, I know George was happy. He knows the hard work's been done. But I thought that Joe had some questions, and Wendy had some questions as well. So yeah, I think we still need to talk this through some more.
I see. And that's pretty valid. I know that we can put some maps together and also talk about what's on the book now, what came from the Planning Commission, and what is being proposed based on the conversation that we had our last meeting. I do want to acknowledge that we're looking for very specific guidance from the city council because any changes we make to the Planning Commission recommendation would have to go back to the Planning Commission under our ordinances. I know that we can make that clearer for you. I think at this point, knowing that we kind of want to wrap this up, and we all want to be on the same page, it sounds like staff needs to provide some more information. I would suggest that we maybe pick a date for a workshop. And I know that having a workshop on our city council days makes it for a very long day. So and next Monday, I'm out of town. But the 31st is probably not a good time to have a public meeting when we're out maybe going trick or treating. So that would put us into November. So we meet on the 7th and the 21st. So would everyone be available on the 14th for a workshop, then? Okay, see lots of ayes. I think you are not going to be available. Can we update you as we go through the workshop?
That's fine.
Okay, so we'll set a workshop for 5:00 or 5:30. Let's just say 5:00 right now, and we'll have workshops at that time. Okay. And it looks like we'll get some maps. We'll put a PowerPoint together that kind of shows where we are, what's in the Planning Commission, and then what's the options that we have. But again, we're just looking for consortium, some guidance from staff to kind of get this over the goal line. And it sounds like we need to have some details on fees, the CBD and off-season, from what I'm hearing from Jeff. Is there anything else we need to kind of prepare? Yes, sir.
Maybe you make a list of bullet points on the key issues that we're all discussing because, you know, when I read this, it is so lengthy, and the ordinance is even more lengthy. That's the right English, but it is very long and very detailed. Why not have a half a dozen or 10 points that are to be discussed, like the number of trucks, the timeframe, where we want them, and have dot-dot underneath there, different suggestions? So we have some kind of a guideline for the discussion. And we can always go off it, but.
Absolutely. Yep, that's a great suggestion. Anything else that we're all thinking of?
One thing, Kate, this was in the proposed change, but it talks about that the city council would, by resolution, adopt the number of food trucks. And if the number would then, or the food truck licenses or certificates would then be issued on a first-come, first-served basis. I just wanted to get some more information on that versus like a lottery or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, kind of, I'll piggyback off that. I guess options we've got for local preference, I eat to give preference to city residents, and step it out from there. So I think we do encourage that.
Okay.
And I just wanted to say that I feel like what was presented today in our packet, like I appreciated the changes and the information that was different from the first time around. So I feel like we're getting closer, at least. Like, yeah, so I appreciated what we have to work with.
Just from my, from my planning commission perspective, we want to make sure we give the city council what the city council wants. So without, you know, a number of iterations, so whatever we can do to hit that mark right the first time, the better.
I would agree.
And I guess I'll also make sure that we're, we'll bundle all the public comments that the Planning Commission received. I'm not sure if all of city councils received it or reviewed that, so we'll make sure that we bundle all the comments that have been received because it was at the Planning Commission for our number of months. And I know they had a wide variety of comments, so we can put that also in the packet of information to be discussed or for you all to digest prior to the workshop.
I think that'd be good. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion then that we will postpone this item for a later date and that we will schedule a workshop for November 14th at 5:00 p.m.
Second. We got a motion, a second. How about we take public comments? I think I know at least one person's here, two maybe, to chat about it. If you'd like to come on up, just state your name and address. And you'll have up to five minutes. Good evening.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. No one else is going to jump up, I will, so that it doesn't get passed over. Yes, the Planning Commission reviewed this for several, several months. But at some point, because of lack of clarity of what the city council wanted, I felt it was more of the dog chasing its tail than moving forward, unfortunately. And there were ordinances provided, Traverse City, Petoskey, Benton Harbor, Pier Marquette. But that information hasn't been provided to you, and an overview was provided. And sometimes the overview, in trying to breathe short, I think kind of missed some points, and I think it would have been helpful had that information that was presented to the Planning Commission been presented to you, such as, you know, looking at how close the proposed vending vehicles would be to brick and mortar. And also taking into account nuances of our own quaint little city and those with licenses, food licenses, and possibly being able to do a food truck similar to a window to go, takeout window, that one restaurant has opened. So yes, a lot of work's been done, but I think unfortunately it's short on creativity and addressing the unique situation and character of our town, our city, and trying to preserve that character while not prohibiting or minimizing entrepreneurship, but encouraging it, but encouraging it such that it doesn't encroach upon our neighborhoods and what we have going downtown now. I actually put a lot of things together over the weekend, expecting more today. Doing links, some of the links in the Planning Commission agenda no longer work. Be happy to share all the links and information that I gathered and put together in a nice, concise couple pages. But I just, I do think there needs to be more discussion and not just cherry picking certain phrases out of ordinances from cities and towns that are not like us. I think we need to more cater to our quaint city and the positives that we have and what can be done to supplement it without supplanting. And I look forward to the workshop, but I certainly hope the workshop is not your standard workshop where just city council get to talk and residents do not always get an opportunity to talk. I think what's been lacking the most is even just input within the city. So the DDA, they first learned of it, appreciate that you only want to give it to them when it's closer to being done. But they got it Wednesday before the Thursday, at which the city, the Planning Commission voted. And so staff need to talk amongst themselves more. That, from what I can tell, did not happen, has continued not to happen. In fact, I went to the DDA after this was initially at the City Council, and it was pretty clear that the DDA wanted to hear back from what happened at the City Council, at Planning Commission, but never did. And so it's like the left hand doesn't know where, what the right hand is doing. And from that, there are crevices forming. I have another minute, Mayor.
Correct.
And I think we just need to look at what's going on. And what I said from the very start is that, you know, it was very nice that a resolution was done for Fruit Street Kitchen. I think that's been a huge success on the south end of town. I think some neighborhoods would actually be open to having a food truck. And I don't understand why the city has been resistant to potentially allow food trucks to come forward with a petition signed by people within 300 feet of where the food truck would be located to allow it to be in a residential, and it would be for a one-year term. If it doesn't work out, it doesn't go back. But this way, people in their own neighborhood have control of what happens in their neighborhood and not dictated to.
Thanks for coming. Anybody else? Good evening, Tom.
Good evening. Thank you. Tom Feeny, Harbor Light Brewery, 516 Phoenix Street. We've been in existence now a little over three and a half years, and we have carried a food license those three and a half years as well. We do not have a brick and mortar kitchen, but we would like to take and entertain the opportunity of having a food truck on our private property on the rear end of the brewery. What I'm asking is that if city council could take into consideration if you are a brick and mortar business in this community and you have a food license, that you grant one food truck to this specific requirement that would allow all restaurants and any other establishments that currently have a food license to exercise this on their own private property. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it.
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street.
Good evening.
Good evening. I wasn't going to have any comments on this one, but after the last request, I want the city council to really be careful with that last request because I think that would be very unfair if you allow the brick and mortar businesses to run their restaurants and then also capitalize with the food truck industry. And then you don't want other food truck owners to try to start a business downtown as well. So it seems to me to be unfair. They can have their restaurants, the brick and mortar, and then you're allowing them to capitalize also with a food truck. That, to me, would not be fair to owners that are trying to get started by having a food truck. So I think that last request, you should really be, really think through it because it would come across as not being very fair to those that's trying to start a business as well by allowing the brick and mortars to utilize a food truck as well as their brick and mortar restaurant. That would not be fair. So please, take that in consideration when you run through that request because either we're going to allow them downtown, and I think I heard this from the council before, heard it from Mr. Reiser, it's pushback as we need to protect the restaurant owners. No, no, no food trucks downtown Phoenix. That request would be putting food trucks right downtown Phoenix. So be careful with that. I hope we be fair across the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else? Good evening.
My name's Monique Crowley. I live at 320 Fruit Street. Didn't plan on speaking tonight, and to be honest, have not even had a chance to look at all the planned new items and all of that. Just wanted to get up here, though, and say, as the owner and operator of Fruit Street Kitchen, I think it kind of serves as a good basis as a pilot program for the city of South Haven. We have operated here for the entire season this year via resolution that was approved by you guys, so thank you. We've had nothing but success, nothing but good turnout from the community, nothing but support. So I mean, if you use that as sort of a prediction of what it could potentially bring to the community, I think it looks pretty successful. I think it looks pretty bright for the future of our entire community. I just don't, I kind of see the conversation going a little more so towards downtown, downtown, downtown. And I just don't want us to lose focus of why this, the initial proposal was brought about to amend the ordinance in the first place. Fruit Street Kitchen never wanted to go downtown. We were just asking that private business owners, private property owners, did not lose the rights that they should have for their own property. So I just don't want us to focus so much on can we have them downtown and forget about people like Mr. Cobb's that own A&amp;D One Stop. He should be able to have food trucks on his property, such as Fruit Street Kitchen that operated there all year. I say all that to say, if we don't come up with something, even right now, Fruit Street Kitchen has to close October 31st because we didn't get the year-round vending approved. And that's all because we've now turned the whole discussion on downtown and the food truck park and all these other ideas, which I get it. The conversation got bigger than we had ever imagined, which is great. Obviously, a lot of people had input on this and wanted to see changes, so I think it's great that the conversation was brought up. I don't want us, though, to lose focus of the fact that there are still a lot of problems with the stipulations and the regulations. Like, you can't put so many regulations in place that you take away the rights of private property owners. And I hope, I don't know how else to word it, but like having to move around and jump from spot to spot and everything like that. If you can work out a situation with the private property owner, or like Mariette said, if you can work out something with the members of that immediate, you know, vicinity, and they say, okay, it's fine, bring it to my area, I don't think that it should be just a blanketed rule that says no food trucks allowed in residential areas. If the residents in that area say they want a food truck, I think a food truck should be allowed. Now, on the other hand, if the residents in that area voted against it, or everybody said no, no, then of course it would be a no. But I just think that, I know you guys have a lot to do because you guys have all these requests coming from everywhere. And I know you guys' job is really hard. And so first, let me thank you guys for the work that you've already done. I do think that we are making some progress, but it's just not really moving fast enough. It is kind of just bouncing back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And on the other side of that, business owners like ourselves are the ones that are feeling the raft of it. Again, we have to close now, October 31st, because we couldn't get the year-round vending approved because it's on hold because we're trying to push them downtown, which that's not what the amendment was ever designed to do, I guess. You know what I mean? Or that's not what the initial proposal was. I just put it like that. Like, we never asked, let's bring a whole bunch of food trucks downtown to compete with all the brick and mortars. That was never a suggestion. I don't know what the time is, but we actually, thank you. We actually already have our own brick and mortar that we purchased in the city of Lawrence. So as far as our personal standpoint on it, or the standpoint of Fruit Street Kitchen, the pilot program for the city that was never named that, but that's how it worked out, we're not focused on being able to go downtown. I think if your food is good enough, the customers are going to come to you. So just keep that in mind, too. Like, I think you got to make it to where the plan can be adjusted. And like, every neighborhood is different. Every, you know, 20 houses is different. Like, you can't just come up with a blanketed rule for the entire city or even the entire district. You know what I mean? Thank you. Like, I think it just needs to be a little more flexible to allow people to do things like what Fruit Street Kitchen did this season. That's it. Thank you.
Glad to share your comments. Is there anybody else? And if not, like, no. All right, we've got a motion, a second to postpone to a later date and set that workshop date for, we said, November 14th at 5:00 p.m. Wait, do you have a second on that?
Yes.
Yeah, motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Let's have a workshop. Thanks, everybody, and thanks for those comments. Appreciate it. And next, let's go ahead to the next one. City Council, we ask to introduce a proposed ordinance amendment for site plan submittal requirements and set a public hearing to occur at the regular city council meeting on November the 7th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. This is just an introduction.
I'll move to introduce the proposed ordinance amendment for site plan submittal requirements and set a public hearing to occur at the regular city council meeting on November 7th at 7:00 p.m.
A second.
All right, motion and a second. Who's got this?
Go ahead, Griffin.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. In July 2021, the city council in city of South Haven adopted an amendment to Section 1405 of the zoning ordinance that addressed requirements of site plan submittal specifically related to an environmental impact statement and what information was required to be submitted in some situations. Following the adoption of this ordinance, the city learned that this created some challenges when it came to accepting applications and moving certain developments forward that were viewed as desirable by the city. The staff memo that you have in your packet talks about two specific situations where this amendment created some confusion for applicant city staff and the community at large. And with that being said, the ordinance was brought back approximately a year after being adopted to the Planning Commission for review to see if they wanted to continue forward with the amended ordinance that was put in place or if there were some amendments that could be considered to address some of these confusing points. With that being said, we have the city attorney, Nick Curcio, here, who can walk through some of the specifics of the new ordinance. But what I'll just say again is a careful balance was sought here to strike between was sought here to strike between making sure that the appropriate materials are still being submitted for city staff, the planning commission and city council to appropriately evaluate the impacts of proposed developments, but at the same time, not being so restrictive that we are preventing desirable development from occurring within the city. So I think that's really the scope of these amendments was trying to strike a better balance between requiring what needs to be required, but not creating a necessary burden to prevent the development that you all want to see.
Just to follow up on that a little bit, some of the specific changes are to, the planning commission tried to focus on two aspects of the current EIS requirement that they felt were most relevant. This council might remember that the city's EIS requirement as currently written is really extensive. It covers significantly broader than environmental contamination, covers impact on schools, covers habitat type of issues, and just a broad range. It really uses the term environment quite broadly. The planning commission, through this proposal, focuses on noise and on environmental contamination. And with respect to environmental contamination, their requirement is for certain projects, and they're listed in the staff report, it's basically construction on a single parcel of three or more new dwelling units or construction of a new structure, at least 85,000 square feet in floor area, which is consistent with the current ordinance, or in the R1, R2, RM1 zoning districts, or within 300 feet of an existing dwelling unit as measured from the closest point on the new structure to the outer wall of such dwellings. So we have kind of thresholds in the ordinance for fairly sizable residential development or construction within the close proximity to residences where developers would be required to submit what's called a phase one environmental assessment. That would then be reviewed by Envirologic, the city's environmental consultant, with an escrow provided by the developer so that Envirologic could assess that and provide comments to the planning commission as to whether there were any environmental concerns relating to the project. And then if there were, could potentially require further environmental reports such as a phase two or a BEA. So this is kind of an alternative process that's more cost efficient for the developer because a phase one is a document that they would almost always have with a project like this as opposed to a new document they need to produce. And at the same time, provides the same type of information, the most relevant information in terms of environmental contamination and effects that would be needed to assess a potential development. So that's kind of the major change is substituting that phase one report for the broader, the broader EIS requirement that's currently in the zoning ordinance. There are some other changes as well, some kind of clarifying language regarding the ability to grant waivers of site plan requirements, specifically allowing the zoning administrator, the planning commission, to grant waivers only upon a determination that a certain requirement just isn't pertinent to an application, it calls for something that's irrelevant or not needed for the application, or by other officials or individuals when the zoning ordinance specifically provides for waiver, such as council can waive PUD requirements, the traffic engineer can waive certain traffic study requirements in some cases, and things of that nature. So that is, I think, the major changes being suggested here, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
The only thing that I'll add to that, Mr. Mayor and council, is I think this is a great example of a time where an ordinance was what put in place and we are learning and adjusting and adapting as we see the impacts of some of these things, not so uncommon to several other ordinances in the city, that over time, you know, we put something in place, see the impacts and learn from it and are able to make it better. I think the only other thing I'd like to highlight here in terms of changes and really where this came from is the ordinance that's in place now really triggers at the certain thresholds, one of them being a five acre threshold. And what we're finding over time is that, is that really the most appropriate trigger for some of these additional information requirements. Additionally, the way the ordinance is written right now, it calls for this environmental impact statement that, as Nick mentioned, asks for a variety of different information and can be really burdensome for those looking to invest in the community, where we're now able to propose alternatives to that that still submit most of the same pertinent information, but in more industry standard ways. Again, trying to make sure that the community's getting the information it needs to adequately evaluate these projects, but to not be overly burdensome that it would prevent desired development from occurring in the community.
Right. And ultimately, there's still requirements for cleanup, doing the phase one. I mean, it just, I think people need to be clear, it's not changing in that regard. Just you're still going through that phase one assessment, giving it to Envirologic. So there are steps being taken to ensure properties are?
Yes, that this, it's not changing any of the rules or the laws when it comes to like due care obligations and stuff like that for property owners. Really what it's doing is clarifying what information and in what situations is needed when people are submitting development plans to the city and particularly the planning commission for site plan review.
Want to take public comments first? Let's do that. Public questions or comments on this one?
Mary Hously, 726 North Shore Drive. This item actually is prematurely before you guys. The bylaws of the planning commission were violated. Not all written correspondence were presented, and the written correspondence that was presented wasn't presented compliant with the bylaws. So a communication from Ms. Nancy was not presented. I actually raised that omission during the planning commission meeting at which attorney Curcio was present, and that lack of communication was ignored. And that had to deal with the mandatory aspect of doing what the environmental consultant recommends, and that was ignored. And therefore, it should not be before you. It should go back to the planning commission to comply with the bylaws. With regard to specifics, because I expect that to be completely ignored also, and you to forge straight ahead, I take great exception with the presentation of the status before you tonight. The, I would say that at least you should hold this item until after we have the results from the 50K grant that we got through our environmental consultant with EAGLE to evaluate Overton. Let's see what the results show and see if the environmental impact statement should have been waived, and see how accurate the representation that the 2015 information was sufficient. I beg to differ that it was. I suspect it will be deficient. I hope you prove me wrong, but if I'm proved right, it will just reinforce the fact that this property was rezoned from industrial to residential when the environmental impact, environmental information was done in 2015. Three years before, the trichloroethylene was found on the property immediately adjacent and on the mixed use trail and was re-remediated in 2018 to 2019 with material equipment put on Overton to make it appear that Overton was done. Therefore, why don't we see what relying on data from 2015 does? Was it the right decision or was it a bad decision? Only then will we know how properly or improperly the waiver of the environmental impact statement was. But that's not where the issues stop. They continue. So the language is vague and imprecise. It says multifamily residential dwellings. How many? What size? Three family units? Three buildings? Which? With regard to three or more new dwelling units for ESA, is that three apartments in one building? Three buildings regardless of the number of apartments? How many? There's not clarity. There's lack of clarity. And then with regard to the 85,000 square feet floor to do the criteria, either it was misspoken or misrepresented, either of which is poor representation of the facts. The original ordinance, if you turn to page one of the staff report, it said cumulative 85,000 square feet. The proposed, the cumulative has been dropped, has been dropped. It's not the same. The requirements have been lessened. That's not protection of our health, safety and welfare. You look at how many buildings are going to be put up because that affects how much land is going to be upheveled and how much surface area is going to be affected by the roofs, by that square, cumulative square footage. It also requires more to be involved than less. With regard to the required additional environmental documents, this is where Nancy and I both said that should be mandated. It can be discretionary as what you include, but if our environmental consultant is saying to require something, it should be required. With regard to waivers, need I repeat, 77 Clinton? Too much discretion is given to the zoning administrator and the city staff. We do not need any more 77 Clintons. We do not need to enforce residents to file an appeal at the ZBA. Oh, wait, we can't appeal plant, site plants to ZBA. So then we'd have to go to circuit court. Please stop pushing expenses off to residents to correct bad decisions by city staff.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else? Questions, comments? All right, council, I mean, I've got a comment on this, the bylaw question that was just raised.
I know that all correspondence were shared with the planning commission.
Counsel, questions, comments?
Will we have a chance then, the November 7th meeting, to discuss more of the details?
We can, or if you got questions, this is a good time to ask them. This is if you got, we could, you know, or if there's things you want clarified, they can clarify it further for that meeting. I mean, I don't know if there's any.
Yeah, we're happy to do best we can to answer questions now. And if for some reason it's not something we can answer now, we appreciate to know what the questions or concerns are and we can work on that between now and the public hearing. So however you all would like to proceed.
I was pretty clear. So if we're good, I guess this is just introduction. So if we're good, let's introduce it and we'll come back. All right, we've got a motion in a second to introduce the package of ordinance amendments and all those, sorry, the proposed ordinance amendments for site plan submittals. Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. It's approved. All right, introduce, sorry. Next, we're going to be asked to introduce an ordinance to add a new article, looks like four, entitled Storm Sewer to chapter 86 of the Code of Ordinances and to set a public hearing to occur at the regular scheduled city council meeting on November the 7th, 22, sorry, November 7, 2022 at 7:00 p.m.
I'm going to motion to introduce the ordinance to add a new article four entitled Storm Sewer to chapter 86 of the Code of Ordinances, and would like to set the public hearing to occur on our regular meeting on November 7th, 2022 at 7:00 p.m.
All right, motion second. Bill Hunter loves to talk storm sewers. Let's go, Bill.
It's your mic, Sam Bill.
Thank you, Your Honor, City Council. Just a little background, we have 38 miles of road within the city. Of those roads, we have 29 miles of storm system. Storm system, which collects runoffs from drainage structures, but rainwater, rainwater, that's it. Rainwater, groundwater, so no contaminants. That's what's supposed to be inside of it. They're designed to actually, historically, all municipal roads are designed what they call to a 10 year event. In South Haven, that'd be four and a half to five inches of rain in a 24 hour period. A 10 year event means there's a 10% chance anytime that that event will happen. That's what that term 10 years from. And you'll also hear the term 50 years, 100 years. 50 years, for example, is 2% and 100 years is 1%. So when someone says there's a 100 year event, wow. But 10 year event, that's what they're designed for. They design for 10, but they add some on to it for drainage, for example, from driveways and some capacity. That's also why developers sometimes have to put in what they call retention ponds and stuff, is because our system can't take all that. So they're desired to do what they call a controlled release. And you'll see that in Trailside, for example, they have what's called an equalization basin. So we have, I'd say, I would say approximately of our roads, 90% of them are covered with these enclosed or storm structures, systems that collect the rain. Not all of them, though. We have some roads, I would say, to the south that run east and west that have no storm system to them. They're crowned in the middle and the water runs to the east or the west. So that, so they run east and west crowned in the, yep, that's correct. Thinking, I was overthinking that one. So since 2016, every reconstruction project we've been doing, we've been running at no cost actually to the properties, we run a storm sewer lateral. The idea of the running the storm sewer laterals while we're doing a complete reconstruct is to have an, have something for that property owner to tie into in the future where if they want to rebuild that site, for example, because what we're seeing a lot now in our community and every community is people that want to build up and down. Everything is refinished. When I was a kid, actually, I don't, I never had a refinished basement. It was always kind of the dungeon, so to speak. You went in there and it was, but nowadays you go down there and it's a living space. Well, with that, actually, in South Haven, requires actually a lot of de-watering because we're all clay. I mean, the water slowly moves to Lake Michigan and clay is, it's a great soil, but it's also impedes, actually, holds the water a lot more. So, which requires actually tile systems outside, tile systems underneath the floor, pumps, and also might require a pump with an ejector system just in case. And we have a lot of residents that have that, just in case of power outages. So we do have that. But again, going back to the lateral, it was to incentivize people to tie onto that and not use actually the sanitary system. Because the sanitary system, what that does when people have the temptation to tie onto that, because it is right there. It's easily, is easily accessible. They can put their pump on there and then they're de-watering. We do know within our system, we have people that are tied on to the sanitary. I can tell right away by the graphs, as soon as it rains, the graph goes up. If it was something that was further out, then the graph would go up slightly, but it jars and goes straight up. So it's a challenge that we have recognized in the South Haven Area Water Sewer Authority, and we're still trying to achieve that. We do do inspections, but it's a, you know, you have a change in properties, people leave, people come. So there's sometimes people, I mean, if you have a Menards, a Lowell's, any kind of hardware store where anybody can out, can buy whatever they want, there's a lot of DUIs. And I mean, it's going to be always a challenge with that. So our Code of Ordinances does not allow, I mean, does not disallow for groundwater discharges to the surface of the road, meaning if I, if I'm a property owner and I want to have that finished basement, I want to be able to. So I've got to get my water to somewhere, but I don't have an enclosed system. So what you see a lot is people that are, maybe have a little notch in a curb and they'll discharge right out to the road. That's been going on in South Haven for a number of years. And you see that predominantly actually in a lot of those right aways that they just don't have an enclosed system. What we're discovering now is that, yes, and that's also a cheaper way to go if you think about it. Is it cheaper means of doing it? So what we don't have is a mechanism in the ordinance to where, say, we do all this work that we have been doing since 2016, we install these storm systems, we run the leads to, we now don't have any mechanism for somebody to, for us to say, okay, you can no longer do this. You need to tie on to the storm sewer lateral. We don't have anything. So somebody could theoretically still discharge down, for example, the sidewalk, let that run there, which has been an issue in a couple of areas where we've had people discharging, where slime would build up and create a trip hazard, or they could do it actually down their driveway, which again creates the same thing. What's in front of city council is an ordinance that, okay, so you have a property that abuts a right away, that has an enclosed system. You should be tied on to that system and you should be, if you choose to do it, not everybody dewaters. I don't have, I don't have, I don't dewater. When the rain was coming in today, I had a little bit coming in the side of my, inside the interior of my basement. I addressed that, take a mop, pick it up, and that's it. But there are some people that do. And if they're doing that, we should have some mechanism that says you're not doing the cheaper method of discharging and creating some other kind of hazard, could be a trip hazard in the future. So that's what's in front of city council. So that's what's in front of city council today, is this ordinance with a mechanism actually to allow us to do that. So I'm here to answer any questions that city council may have regarding this ordinance.
Anybody have questions here?
Yeah, I've got some questions, Bill. So say, for example, somebody puts in a basement de-watering system, they put in a sump pump and their contractor discharges it to the right-ofway, and either they didn't know or at that time there wasn't a storm sewer lateral in front of their house. So then every time that sump pump kicks on and discharges to the right-ofway, then that would be considered a violation? And would it be, the way that the code seems to be written, the first violation would be $50, and then would it just be, is it like $50 a day, or is it $50 every time it discharges, or?
I would say $50 for the first time you're out there, and then it would progressively, and then if you're out there for the second time, and then the third time. Now, that being said, we can change it to whatever council would like. I mean, that was just, I took a stab at what violations would be. My biggest thing would be to have a mechanism where we could accomplish actually just eliminating these discharges out to the curb, or any discharges that cross a sidewalk water-wise or down a driveway.
That makes sense. We should always try to strive for compliance versus...
Correct. But I can see we're actually, where somebody is reasonable like me, if somebody else was in this position, would go straightforward, and it might be something staff would have to consider something alternate.
Now, you may not know the answer to this, but ballpark, what would it be cost-wise for a homeowner to hook into a storm sewer lateral? If, I know it would depend on the situation, but is it like, are we talking like $5,000, or is it something more like, you know, $1,000 or something like that?
Oh, it, I mean, that's a very good question, and Kate actually sent me something about this earlier, and of course, my initially, when I'm typing something, I go, well, it depends, elevation, like you were just saying, and I would say if I would, I would say anything between $6,000 and probably $9,000. But I'm thinking in my head, that would be a complete turnkey system to where it would be somebody putting in some kind of tile pump system, sump. Now, depending on what you're trying to dewater, maybe someone's just dropping a pump into some existing pump they have and they just want to discharge, it could be something like $2,000. But I'm also referencing a sewer lateral that's already to the property in 2016. Now, if they're going to run something to a, let's say, a sewer line that's in a road in a right-ofway, and you have asphalt costs, concrete costs to replace, that's going to be even higher. I did reference actually, in my staff report, a special assessment, and that was $35,000 to $50,000. I was referencing actually to rebuild the road and to accommodate actually everybody on the road a special assessment. So the cost associated with that $35,000 to $50,000 would be rebuilding the road, so sub base, base, asphalt, concrete, whatever it costs, actually, the pipe itself running the lateral, so that would be more extensive. But yeah, to answer your question, George, and I know you understand, it does vary, but I would say ballpark anywhere between 6 to 9, but I'm thinking of a turnkey system to where pumps, floats, tile system, everything is set.
So I just would question then, if we, as we establish fines, we need to make sure it's commensurate with the cost of compliance, because I don't want to get into a situation where somebody sees it's easier to pay a fine than it is to pay the cost of becoming into compliance.
Mm-hmm.
So, a couple more questions, so, and I know, Nick, you put this together, did you benchmark other communities on this?
In terms of fees?
Not just the fees, but the whole, the language and everything like that?
Yes, so this is a little bit less, other communities, some of the communities do different approaches to the same issue. You have communities with like retention detention ordinances, which are kind of more onerous than this, and not something Mr. Hunter recommended. It's kind of in the model of a mandatory connection ordinance, which we have for sewer, for sanitary sewer and for water, just taking that model and importing it, and a little bit modified version into storm sewer, and the language is similar in that regard.
Okay. And then for things like, like somebody decides to put in gutters on their roof, and they bring those down, and if it, if they discharge it too close to the right-ofway, would that be considered a similar situation where they would be potentially assessed a fine if that rainwater wasn't?
That's not really a constant, I would say. I've seen those already where they have pop-up valves over there. That's definitely not a constant de-watering. I would say, I would say no. That's more, when that's happening and those pop-up valves are going, everybody else, everything else is already getting wet already. This is, this is something to address, actually, somebody that's constantly trying to dewater a clay and keep something dry, which is to me different, but that's a very good question.
Last question, say somebody has a flood in their basement or something like that, and they, they bring in a pump and are temporarily pumping water out to the curb. In that case there, could they be cited under this ordinance for that particular situation?
No, that would be emergency situation. I would compare that to, to a construction site, where we have the construction, they have to dewater every time they're doing that. So that's not something we, we only ask when you're de-watering for a construction site, of course, would help the owner out, but they're not blocking actually walkways, pedestrian ways to provide some kind of reroute for pedestrians to get across. But that would be something that would, to me, would go along the lines of a construction site, some kind of de-watering like that.
Would there need to be some kind of clarification included in the ordinance to make sure that's clear, or?
The language is unlawful to pump groundwater. Would you consider pumping out of a flooded basement that's probably going to be rainwater? Do you think that would fall within that language?
It would fall underneath that language, so.
We can draft an exception or some clarifying language. If you were to introduce this, we could bring in alternative language to the, to the next meeting.
I guess for my...
I think it makes sense. For the case of emergency, it makes sense to have an exception.
There are a few too many questions I have on this. I'm not ready, I'm sure I'm ready to introduce it to, for the next meeting. It's my own opinion.
Other questions you haven't had answered, or?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. How about others? I just, okay, I just had a few.
I have a question. Is, so with new houses right now, if they're doing the de-watering, are they currently required to be in the system?
Oh, if they're de-watering, if they're de-watering, for example, they want to take their grain water, they ask us, hey, we want to run a line, then that's just something we just, okay, and they, they pay an inspection fee of $50, and they pay for the whole cost associated with the pipe from the, from the, wherever the storm line runs within the right-ofway, they have to run it from there to their property inside. Just for clarification, too, because there is a big difference, besides the obvious one of sanitary and storm, the responsibility actually of the line, the responsibility for the maintenance of a, of a, I'm sorry, storm lateral is the, from the house all the way to wherever the main is located at. Because we don't, we don't charge, it's not a utility, we don't charge a ready-to-serve. For example, what we do on sanitary, we charge a ready-to-serve, so that means readily my staff can dig it up and repair it, where storm is not that way. So even any kind of maintenance associated, it's similar to, to fire services. I just wanted to make sure that was clarified for city council.
Sorry, your question?
I think, I don't know, I think the question was, if you're building new, are you required to tie in?
Thank you.
We're, I'm not, they have to, I don't say, there's nothing I can require them to tie in.
The ordinance does not say that.
Yeah, the storm, stormwater is only mentioned four times within our ordinance and nothing that says it's required. They'd have to come to me and say, we want to run our water to, and I would say, great, you have to run it to the storm, the storm is here, and this is where, the only issue would be is if they come up to me and say, well, it's cheaper for me to put some pop-up valves and discharge it across the, oh, you're right, it is cheaper. I have nothing I can do to require them to do that.
Do we, do we check? Obviously, we want to make sure they're not going to the sanitary, but what's the process to ensure, like that final home inspection, that someone just sort of verifies, where's your water going? Is there like a little box that says, it's going to pop-ups, to the creek, to the road, to the this, to the, I mean, I'm just curious, that's more of a...
That would be the plumbing, the plumbing inspector would be doing that, would be, and plus, we would be doing that, our staff, when we inspect. Say if they're inspecting to our storm, we have an inspection fee of $50, and that fee would cover us inspecting to verify to make sure actually they're tied into it. So my staff would go into there and make sure how that's tied in, make sure there's nothing else tied into that. Just as an FYI, when we get calls for surface discharges where people are concerned, my staff does go inside and re-inspect. We have done that before. As a courtesy, we'll tag the door just to say, hey, just, we had, for example, a call, maybe it was a little foamy, maybe just due to, I don't know what particulars they could have in there, but we go in there and verify. And we have actually did find a plumber once that, in an area, that a new owner came in, they redid some plumbing, and I believe it was their deep sink actually that was discharging. And thank goodness for somebody reporting, and they said that it was a smell of a detergent, and we did respond, and we worked with the owner to have it plumbed back to where it was before.
How would an owner know if they had a lateral available?
They could call us. We have records for all of that, and we would be able to tell them and give them a snapshot and even measurements of where it was at with as built.
Right. And I know you, there's not a lot, I know, I'm one of the people that made many phone calls, because I got all the calls about a certain individual that was pumping, and we're talking with a fire hose, people, water across the sidewalk and creating quite a skating rink of algae. So, and that was just to dewater a field, basically. So, I mean, obviously, I don't know how many situations we have, kind of as you look system-wide, that, there weren't a lot, as from your report, I was...
There really isn't. Every time we get calls from, or emails from somebody when we investigate it, most of the time I'm explaining to the person that's actually calling is that that person or that property just doesn't have a storm system available. Most of the time, that's what it is, we're responding to those calls or those messages from the individual. But there are a few, one in particular, where it's, they have a lateral available to them and they choose to not utilize it.
Gotcha. I think back to you, I mean, that was, I had asked Kate to figure out, if we could figure out what the cost was, because I was kind of curious, because I know when we did our house, I mean, we had an easy out, but if you have, if you actually have an ejection system, if you have it, I mean, if someone's already pumping to the road, I mean, basically, you got to dig a trench and run some PVC, assuming you already got an ejection system. Like you said, I think if you did tile, that's a whole nother scenario.
Well, it depends, it does depend on the soil conditions you're there to and what you're trying to dewater. You could do a tile system, for example, the worst-case scenario would be a tile system underneath the whole concrete floor, and a lot of times when they retrofit, they just go on the side walls of the foundation itself, they'll take about that much, they'll put a tile on, but you also see them tile the outside depending on the soil conditions to get the water before it gets there, so it's like a two-stage approach. And that would probably be that $6,000 to $9,000 with a, with a pump system, I would say, plus actually running, running it to the lead that's available. But the city of South Haven has been, only been running these sanitary, I'm sorry, these storm laterals only since 2016, and only during complete road reconstruction projects. So the resurfacing roads that we do, we don't run storm sewer laterals for those.
Gotcha. And obviously, if we're rebuilding a road and we notice somebody's already pumping into the street, we would say, hey, this is your, well, once we pass this, we're, that would be really obvious to say, hey, I've got a big hole dug here, would you like to connect? So, I...
Can I ask one more question? What would the options be if someone can't afford to go into our system, but they are needing to dewater?
I haven't run into that yet, so we've, that would be something, I would say, something special we'd have to bring in front of city council. We've done certain things in the past where we've, somebody that couldn't afford a driveway, we spread it out over 20 years to do that, and that was something we would have to bring individually in front of city council, and city council would have to approve those. But we have done that in the past. Last one I can remember was a driveway, I think we did.
Okay.
All right, we've got a motion, we have a second. I guess I'm comfortable with the introduction, if there's no other questions. So I guess I'll leave it to others. So, motion second, if there's nothing else, maybe just roll call it.
Do we want a public comment?
Oh, sorry, public, I'm sorry, public. Almost missed the public. Public comments, if you have questions, comments, come on up. State your name and address. I'll have up to five minutes.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I already corresponded via email with Bill and copied the city council. Thank you, Councilman Re, the sleeper, for bringing up several questions. I think that does indicate it's premature to introduce it at this time, to set a public hearing so close in advance, and the questions from today indicate, I think, some other shortcomings that have not been anticipated are ensuring that there's hookup during construction and things like that. I just, it's short, concise, but unfortunately, the brevity has, I think, resulted in a lot of holes that need to be more shored up before there should be a vote. And just, I mean, this is the very first time we're even hearing about it. It's not from the planning commission, it's just out of thin air. And inquiring, there's really only one person whose property was identified, don't know if that person's been informed of this change, do not know if that person could easily conform, do know that that home was, the earliest sale on the records for that home is 2011, so it's been that way for quite some time. This just seems, as I indicated, a little punitive to just come out of nowhere and give someone no ability to correct it before fines. I appreciate having the fines to encourage compliance, but my gosh, this is like strong arm into compliance, when, as I said earlier, I mean, gosh, our STR ordinances, although I think there's discussion as to how well they're written and the creative ways they're interpreted, but they get a warning, they don't get fines, and this is significant. So especially with the rain we've had the past few days, the amount of pumping that would occur, I mean, the fines could get huge. And then that on top of the hookup fee, maybe there should be a reduction for the fee for the fines paid if someone's really trying to get this corrected? And how easy is it for workmen to be found to get this corrected? There's delays. I mean, how long does it take to get things in the current atmosphere of construction and yard work? You know, there aren't the tradesmen around to do some of the stuff that might need to be done. So are they going to get penalized because they can't find someone to do it? That just really seems unfair, and it really doesn't seem that it's commensurate with the problem. I mean, the problem's been existing, and I just, I really think it's premature. I think it's a disservice to the citizens to just have this pop up out of nowhere right in the fall when people are leaving. You know, the second homeowners are here less often, of course, they don't get a vote, but they may be most impacted by it. It's just, especially with the vision statement, I'm going to go back to the vision statement, the vision statement, engaging the community to resolve the problems together, come up with a reasonable solution together, how does putting... come up with a reasonable solution together. How does putting this on at the end of a Friday for a Monday hearing and then setting it for a hearing two weeks later, that's not embracing the community?
Ms. Counselor?
Joe Wolkins, 811 Indiana Street. This is just a point of clarification for me. It's not, I'm not diving into all this punitive stuff. You put out a lot of stuff tonight. I simply want to know, is that system available for, um, existing homes that might have issues with water coming in the basement?
Oh, like the storm system, Joe? Is that what you're?
Well, you know, help me understand this whole process. It sound like you might, uh, previous owners, uh, existing homes might be able to tie into this system to run groundwater away from the, the basement?
Yes, yes, they would.
And what, what would that cost be? I mean, and I'm, I'm asking questions tonight only because I've lost a basement, had to redo it. And I would, and I know the city at one time allowed, um, different, and I've, I've seen this walking, where there's a pipe being notched into the curb, and the, and the water goes, and it's constantly wet in front of you. I mean, but I have water, I gather, from my drain tile, and it goes into my basement, and that's what a risk is. And, and I've lost it. I would, I would like to be able to run that water into some other system versus coming into the house.
Yes, you'd be able to utilize that. Uh, we do allow actually people to tie on to the, uh, public, uh, storm system for that, for what you just described right there. That would be groundwater discharging, as long as it's just groundwater, yeah.
Yeah, just ground, so what, what, what would the cost be?
Uh, it could be, Joe, it could be depending on, uh, for example, like the distance from your house to wherever the, the storm lies in the road. If there's, uh, concrete work involved or asphalt work, you could run anywhere between, um, 10 to 15,000, or it could be less. It could be in that six to nine range, maybe the storm system, because sometimes those storms run on the backside of the curb and the catch patients all catch it like this, and you might be lucky and just be able to tie into the side and then run it in.
And so it would, so it would be in violation to the ordinance if I ran a pipe and stick it through a curb and have it, have it-
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and then some of the ones that, that you probably have seen in, in the, um, are probably ones that are, don't have a storm system for them to tie into. That's a lot of those roads, uh, um, like, for example, where, where, where I live in that 500 block of Humphrey, then 400 and 300, those ones there don't have actually storm systems. The storm systems are running out center and the roads are crowned in the middle, and then the water goes one way or the other.
One question. So, we have two houses beside us, I mean, on, on each side. They're older homes. I can see they're old, they're being, um, ran by older, older people that I think might sell at some point. And I think those homes could turn into big mammoth homes and, uh, cause even more water problem. Would you, would you require those homes, if they rebuild those homes, to tie into this system or at least run that water away from me?
I, I can't require them to tie into. It kind of goes back to, I mean, our ordinance only mentions storm system. I mean, for example, I have no authority to require them to, if they ask me, then I would tell them, hey, you could run it to here, but like I was just saying before, if they, something cheaper, they could put up pop-up valves, and the way our ordinance is written right now, they can pop up and discharge and go over top of, you know, or they can cut through the curb. Probably a pop-up valve, Joe.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Joe. Anybody else? Anything else here? All right. We've talked a lot about storm drains, which is good. So we've got a motion, we've got a second to at least introduce this. We had a few comments, I guess, to take back and clarify, at least regarding emergency, if there's a flood in the basement, and then, I guess, I'd be curious on hook-up stream construction, but that's all.
I, I just want to make sure also the fines are going to do what we expect, which is to, uh, advance compliance, and that people aren't just going to pay fines instead of paying the, you know, thousands of dollars to, uh, actually get into compliance, so.
Yes. So just speaking, let me speak briefly on enforcement, because there were some comments about it. The, the city, just in, in general, doesn't start immediately citing property owners for violations with no notice prior. Um, in fact, I've, I've heard from the ordinance prosecutor that the local judge will just throw citations out if there's no documentation of, of notice. So the city's intent would be to, to provide notice and some reasonable time to come into compliance before starting to cite. Um, in terms of the fines, that, this is the city's kind of customary fine schedule that, that's, that applies unless there's, um, an alteration by the council. Um, if, if you had an owner that was, um, not wanting to come into compliance, it would probably require successive citations, but the way the ordinance is set up each day is a violation, so you could just, um, keep tacking on the violations until they were, until it got too expensive to, to continue. So that, that would be the enforcement plan. There's also always the ability to go to circuit court and ask the court to, to enter an order requiring a connection, called injunctive relief, and it's something that ordinance prosecutor likes to do in these types of situations as well. So we do, we do think we'd be covered from enforcement perspective.
Yeah. And I don't know if there's any way to get a, a feel for how many, uh, homes might be impacted by this. We probably don't keep track of, of that kind of thing, but I, I would be concerned that we get into a same sort of thing that we ended up with the, uh, fire pit ordinance. We, we have the best intentions, but then once it comes out and people start seeing that they're impacted, that all of a sudden now, we're sending it back to the city council with, you know, changes, so.
I understand. I guess, for me, I guess it, for me, it starts to address an issue that we know we've got to address, which is, we're dumping water that needs to be either, if it's not available, it's not available, they can continue to do. If we've updated the road, there's an available connection, we want them to connect instead of dumping it across sidewalk down the street. I mean, I think that's the intention. We don't, and we don't want them dumped into sanitary either. So, am I missing something here?
Me neither.
Pretty much.
Bill, didn't we, six, eight years ago, we did pretty extensive smoke testing to see if people were tied into the sanitary. So I, it's not like this is running rampant, that it's, right?
Yeah.
It's just a couple of small cases that-
Yeah, we, we, when we keep doing smoke testing, I mean, it, it, smoke testing does take quite a bit of time, and we keep finding more, but when we're doing, even the extensive amount we're doing, we're only doing a, really a fraction of, um, like I said, the charts really speak for itself. As soon as we have a rain event, it, it charts right up and peaks, which tells me immediately it's really, it's close to the plant, and it just doesn't take that long to get to it. So, but yes, we have done, and we'll continue to do. I think that's an ongoing thing that we always have to do, is just keep vigilant in doing this, because we have new property owners that come in, and they can replumb things, and I think it's going to be ongoing.
Yeah. I think that's, that's the tough part. And you're confident, I get my big thing is, new construction, that there's a verification process at the end. The plumbing inspector is verifying where that stormwater is headed.
Plus if, plus if they're tying into our system, we have, we have the $50 inspection, which includes our staff verifying that's the only thing that going into there is storm water and groundwater, that's it.
That's my biggest thing, because that, that addresses that, so, okay. Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Onuki?
Um, yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Smith?
I'm sorry, Arnold?
Yes.
Anne Smith?
Yes. All right. So it will be introduced, and I guess I just, if there's anything else that comes up, get it to staff before it comes back before us. Um, so there's still time. And next, city council is going to be receiving an update on the 2022 code enforcement efforts. Griffin rushed right up.
Yes, thank you. Um, good evening again. What we have before you is a code enforcement update, um, based primarily on our statistics from the 2022 calendar year to date. Um, as many of you are aware, over the last almost two years now, the city has really revamped a lot of its different code enforcement programs, um, based on feedback from the public and, and city council and other relevant stakeholders. When I say code enforcement programs, I want to kind of start off this, this report with just acknowledging that we use the term code enforcement quite broadly here in the city of South Haven, and it can refer to a variety of different, um, ordinance enforcement activities. It can include everything from parking enforcement, parking enforcement, beach safety enforcement, short-term rentals, um, all the way to, um, the building department nuisance activity, property maintenance type, um, things that we're going to largely focus on, um, this evening. So what we have before you is my best attempt at a, a relatively concise report, um, about the efforts of our code enforcement team, um, to date. So as a friendly reminder, um, the South Haven Building Department hired a full-time code enforcement officer, um, early in 2022. Historically, um, the city has employed a part-time code enforcement officer, but to make sure that we were investing in the services that were demanded of, of the citizens and city council, um, that was elevated to a full-time position this last year. Um, this individual responds to citizen concerns, conducts, um, some property inspections, and pursues appropriate enforcement action largely related to nuisance activity and property maintenance concerns. And what I mean by these is, um, concerns about garbage bins, concerns about tall grass and weeds, debris, um, inoperable vehicles, and other property maintenance, um, quality of life type, um, concerns. The code enforcement officer's role is primarily to educate the public and encourage voluntary enforcement, and when that doesn't work, take the appropriate enforcement steps to bring the subject property into compliance. Um, these efforts are variable and rely largely on, on problem solving, um, because as you can imagine, there are a lot of unique situations when it comes to, um, dealing with unique properties, dealing with unique people, dealing with people in a variety of, um, economic situations or other unique situations that arise in, in a community. So, so with that being said, the goal of our code enforcement efforts is, is problem solving, encouraging compliance, eliminating violations, not being punishing or punitive. However, there are occasions when appropriate enforcement action is required. Um, there's a variety of different types of enforcement action, um, that take place. Normally, these actions are progressive. Um, there are, again, there are some unique situations such as, uh, repeat offenses and so on and so forth, where some of these steps can get skipped. But generally, um, we start with, um, courtesy notices, then to formal warning letters, moving to citations, and then if, uh, situations aren't addressed at that point, um, additional citations can be issued, or as, um, the city attorney mentioned earlier, we've also taken a number of, of properties to court this year to, um, uh, get judgments to, to enforce our, the applicable ordinances. But with all of that being said, um, this code enforcement team's efforts are largely split now that, uh, they're full-time into two primary categories. Um, one I like to call the, the field work category. Um, these are the site inspections, the follow-up visits, um, the patrolling, the conversations with residents. Um, I know I, I get really excited every time, um, our code enforcement officer comes in, he goes, yeah, so-and-so waved me down on the street today, and they just wanted to share what they were seeing in their neighborhood. That's, that's the type of involvement and engagement we want to have out of positions like this. The other half of the time is spent here in city hall completing the administrative tasks that are just as important when it comes to getting results for these types of code enforcement activities. So that's, um, answering phone calls, answering emails, um, uh, tracking, uh, follow-up activities, issuing the tickets, letters, and notices, as well as tracking the enforcement activities, so we can put together reports like this and start to really, um, measure trends and, and see if what we're doing is working. So both proactive and reactive enforcement strategies are used and needed to promote compliance. Uh, so with all that being said, I, I'll just draw your attention here quickly to, to some of the statistics you'll see in your report. Um, we did pull data from 2020, 2021, and 2022. I do want to, um, caution everyone to at least be, be somewhat flexible when looking at the 2020, um, statistics. As we all know, that was the COVID year, and, and there, like a lot of things, there, there can be some, um, anomalies or unique things for that numbers. But nevertheless, wanted to at least put three years out there so you can see, um, how we're tracking related to a lot of these, um, most common violation types. Uh, if you're looking at, I think it's the third page of this report, you have some comparisons of some of our, our largest , um, violation areas, and seeing the trends on the, the increased amount of activity, um, as well as it broken down a few other ways, ending the report with going from total enforcement actions being, um, courtesy notices, warning letters, and tickets. Um, and then at the very end, it pulled out just by tickets, um, figuring that may be, uh, a helpful way for you all to, um, see. The last comment I have is, is when looking at the increased enforcement action in a lot of these categories, I, I just want to recognize our team and, and say, I don't necessarily think there's a lot more violations going on in the city. I guess I can't say that for certain, but what I can tell you is our team is being very diligent when it comes to addressing concerns as they arise. So I, um, I can say that confidently that there, there, that is, that is a large part of the increased number of not only citations, but total enforcement actions, um, that have occurred to date this year. Uh, with that being said, I'm happy to do the best I can to answer any questions. Yes?
Simple question. I remember there was a gentleman who did this part-time, and I, I remember years ago when I was out of town getting a notice about my grass too long. I happened to be down at a funeral for my father in Florida. Always stuck in my mind, here I came home with a notice. But he was right, I couldn't do anything about it. But my question is, we replaced him with one full-time person? Because you say a team. How many people are doing this?
There is one full-time code enforcement officer, but I do say a team, because a lot of the activity involved in, in code enforcement, um, it can involve looking at records, it can involve cooperation with the police department, it can involve a lot of things. So code enforcement activities overall is a team effort, but we do only have one full-time code enforcement officer.
And do you have any sense, is it helping having a full-time person versus a part-time? Do you see-
I, I would say it's helping a lot. Um, I, I think we can see, I, I mean, one way to, to see it is you can see by the increased enforcement actions being taken. Um, but I can tell you in general, I know, um, the interactions that our code enforcement officer has with many members of the public is, is, is showing progress when it comes to a lot of the goals of code enforcement, education, working towards compliance, building relationships, helping people understand the ordinances, so-
I would also say that it is helping a lot, having him as a full-time. We've had, we've had a number of problem areas around the city, and him being here full-time, um, he has the ability to be out in, out in the field and then following up, doing the follow-up that I think that maybe wasn't very conducive when you have a part-time person. But we've had, um, a number of interactions, uh, with some of our problem areas, and residents feel very heard and very responded to because of this full-time person.
We've also been able to address, I can think of at least three or four off the top of my head, um, properties that are, are long-time, or I, I hate to say almost like historic property maintenance concerns in the city, and we've been able to make major progress over the last six-plus months just on those properties. So I'm, I'm very, um, reassured in the direction we're going.
I know it's something I've had residents ask me about a year ago, saying, why don't we have someone check on this more often? So I think that this is a, a step in the right direction. The one odd thing, that was these trash bins. Why has that gone up fourfold? Is it because we're watching it closely? Is it because of the change in companies, that people are mixed up on the dates, that they're picked up or going out? I mean, why would it go up so much? And did we look at it all by month? Because my guess is in the summer, when you have a lot of short-term rental people, they're not familiar with our days of pickup, and they leave, and maybe it's being left out. I don't know, but why would it go up fourfold?
I, I think a lot of the reasons you mentioned probably, um, impact that. I, I know that we, um, had a grace period for several months after the transition to Bestway. So you could even reasonably presume these, these efforts are in a shorter period of time. And, and just to clarify, anytime a, a ticket's issued for a garbage bin, there's already a courtesy notice, a formal warning, and then a ticket issued. So it's not like we're just going out there trying to, to smack people's hands for, for no reason. But I, I think, um, people learning the new- But I think people learning the new system is at play. I think probably more relevantly is we're paying a lot more attention to it than we have in the past and are doing the best we can to encourage compliance.
Thanks. Any other questions? Nothing? No, it looks good. If someone has a question about a code enforcement, do they just call City Hall? I know the answer, but...
Absolutely, yep. They're welcome to contact City Hall, welcome to contact the city manager or myself, and we can put them in touch with the code enforcement officer. But, you know, Rick Lopers, our new code enforcement officer, and he deserves a lot of credit. He works incredibly hard and has been a great addition to our team.
Okay, sounds good. Appreciate it. And we'll move on. I think now we get to hear from our police chief, Ms. Natalie Thompson. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, thank you. I wanted to start tonight, talk about a grant that the police department was awarded. Give credit to Sergeant Hathaway sitting back there, he's been working hard on some grants. Patrick Lee Bulletproof Vest Partnership, the BVP created by the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Act of 1998, is a unique United States Department of Justice initiative designed to provide critical resource to state and local law enforcement. Ballistic vests, or bulletproof vests, are safety equipment required to be worn by each uniformed officer per South Haven Police Department policy and also by BVP standards. Each vest is custom tailored to the wearer and has a service life of five years. The South Haven Police Department applied for and was awarded funds for the purchase of 11 ballistic vests this past fiscal year. The grant offers to fund up to half the cost of each eligible vest. South Haven was awarded the maximum amount applied for, an amount of $4,397.50. Unlike some departments, South Haven police officers are held to strict compliance of our ballistic vest policy, and every five years, officers' vests are replaced with new ones to adhere to expiration of protection standards. I believe it's one of the most important investments that lend to the protection and safety of officers. Had a few emails today, and someone asked me, "Well, why are you strict about the policy?" I always have been, and that is, we have general orders and we have rules. That's one of our nine rules. And so I've made it pretty clear, the officers know that they have to wear it. So it's not one of these, if you want to... But I was just looking today on the Officer Down Memorial page, so this is why we wear them. So far this year, there have been 190 police officers killed in line of duty, and out of those, 56 were killed by gunfire. So that's up 10% this year. So, you know, even in this area, we've seen an increase in violence, including incidents with guns, so it's important, and it's well worth the money that we spend. Next, just at time of year, a lot of people are maybe going south for the winter or, you know, vacation, but we, just a reminder, we are doing our property checks, and I included a notice that we send out. I think Megan put it on the city's website, and we have it on our Facebook page, but basically, if anyone's going on vacation for any amount of time, these property check form requests are available through our information center. They can be completed and turned in personally, or you can fax them in. Like I said, they can be completed for any amount of time, for a business or a residence. These forms are really helpful for us because you can include specific things about the venue, maybe a phone number for you or whoever's watching your property. So you can call the information center and fax those in, and then there's also a link that you can click on to view that. We've had actually a lot of those completed this year, so the officers are very good, primarily on the night shift, to check your residences for you. And like I said, those do include businesses, so... Next, I've got some of the statistics for our department. So far, and this is as of September 30th, our arrests are up to 323, so we've surpassed the last two years in arrests. Our citations and warnings as of September 30th are 1,123, so we've actually surpassed the last three years with enforcement. Foot patrol hours, we are at 354, which is getting close. Last year total, we were at 400, so got a few more months left, so we will hopefully surpass what we had last year. And then our total calls for service, which was interesting, again, this chart shows as of September 30th, so we still have a few more months to go, but we have, our total calls for service for the year, 4,357. So as you can look at that graph, we've surpassed the three previous years, actually in all categories. For the city of South Haven, we've responded to 2,796 already, compared to a total of 2,641 last year. And then in South Haven Township, we've responded to 1,561, which is already ahead of our total from last year. So we've been very busy, and we still have a few more months to go in the year. The next chart that I have is the assaults for the month of September, again, separating out the domestic-related assaults. So we had a total of 12, and out of the 12, excuse me, nine of those were domestics. On the next graph, complaints, and just to clarify this, this is different from calls for service. The calls for service chart is everything we respond to. That can include police things, we respond to everything that Shays does, and we may not necessarily take a report number. So this next graph that says complaints, those are report numbers that we're taking. So again, this number is pretty high. As of September 30th, we have 1,610 compared to last year's total, it was 1,702. The property checks this year already, we are up to 889 as of September 30th, so we're well above the last two years. See, in 2019, we did 1,490, so don't know if we're going to beat that this year. And again, blight complaints, those are primarily what we do in South Haven Township. And then the next page are citations for this year. Again, at the bottom, we've got the ordinance, traffic, parking, warning, and then golf carts, so that's self-explanatory. And then the next set of graphs are the year-to-date graphs. These are all generated through our computer system. So again, our top five offenses overall so far for the year, driving violations, assault, larceny, retail fraud, and then invasion of privacy is trespassing. And then our top person crimes are assault, sexual assault, sexual assault non-forcible, and homicide or manslaughter. That second addition to the homicide manslaughter, we had a fatal motorcycle accident. So in those situations, when a driver is at fault, they can be charged with what's called negligent homicide, so that falls into the same classification, so that is, by that number, is up to two for this year. And then property crimes, pretty consistent, but they have been, larceny and retail fraud are our top two. And then on the next page, and I had someone paying close attention to these, and I'm happy that they did, so these are our top five offenses in the assault category for the month of September. This chart says 13, that should actually be 12, and that pie chart I showed you had 12. The reason for this is that our computer will automatically pick up on the reports that the officer, he'll take an initial report that something is reported, and there was one in particular that was completely unfounded, so he did a supplement to show that that was unfounded. So, but before we did that pie chart, the system still counted that as one, so that is inaccurate. Instead of 13 assaults, should be 12. That was caught by someone paying close attention to this, which I appreciate. And next, we've got our person crimes for the month of September. And again, that should be 12 assaults, and we had one new sexual assault that was reported that we're investigating. And then the property crimes, pretty consistent with, for the year, larceny and retail fraud. And then, finally, I just wanted to give an update. Last week on the 13th and the 36th Circuit Court in Papa, a jury found Tia Sutton guilty of second-degree murder. Sutton shot and killed Chondal Newell in South Haven on July 8th of 2021. Three South Haven officers each have received awards for their exceptional work on this case, Officer Michael Kinnazuski, Officer Kevin Wildy, and Detective Ryan Myers. The investigation on this case and its successful outcome really exemplify the extraordinary talent of these officers. And in your packet, I had attached the original press release on that when it had happened. And one last reminder, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so if you see the purple ribbons, that is what that signifies, and October is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so those are the pink ribbons.
So, no, very good. Go ahead, ask a question. Yeah, question. Somewhere, I remember you giving a number, but I want to make sure I understand it. How many people in the history of this town have been shot, have been murdered, homicide in the history of this town?
Okay.
Roughly?
In the history, I don't know. I can tell you in the past 30 years.
Okay, that's good enough.
Okay, in the past 30 years, we had a murder-suicide in, I want to say, between 2002, 2005, there was a shooting, husband killed his wife and then killed himself. And then, fast forward to 2021, we had the Chondal Newell murder, and then unfortunately, we had the pier shooting where the suspect shot two people, killed one, and killed himself. In 2020, we had a homicide, Randy Hall stood. That was not a shooting, but he severely beat his wife and killed her. That was not a shooting, but we had that in 2020. So, I don't know if you want me to differentiate gun violence or murders, but we've had one, two, three, I guess, four murders.
And one of them, I thought you just said, was suicide?
Well, in two of those, the perpetrators killed themselves back in, and I don't mark my words on the date, I was here, but it was, I believe, it was after 2000, but a husband killed his wife and then killed himself, so he...
So the person that killed themselves, take those numbers out, suicide out, for whatever reason, they shot themselves. So roughly, how many? About three, four?
One, two, three, four.
Four, okay. Here's where I'm going. Of course, a resident made a statement that I really took offense to, so I want to be clear on this. So of the four shootings, or four homicides in this town, how many have been, I'm trying to be very careful wording this, how many have been in Ward 1, 2, and 3? And those in Ward 1, how many were the south side? How many were farther north-south? Because the comment made implied that the south side had all these shootings, and in fact, two of the three that I remember, since I've been on city council, have been on the north side of Ward 1.
Well, I can actually, I used to have the addresses remembered, but I can tell you, so on August 20th of 2020, the domestic where the man killed his wife, that was on 259 Pearl Street. So that was one of them. The one in after 2000 where the man shot his wife, that was the 1,000 block of Superior. The Chondal Newell murder that happened by Elkenburg Park during the day, there was no one else at the park, and he ended up dying when he crashed into Pizza Hut, so that was by Elkenburg Park. The pier shooting was, is random and extraordinarily rare as you can get. That was a stranger-to-victim relationship, and of course, that happened at our beach, so, you know, it's been pretty spread out through the city. So I think whoever said that, I mean, the facts don't support that any one area of our city is experiencing a higher homicide rate, because the ones I just mentioned are, oops, I'm sorry, they're not all in one area or one ward.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Chief Thompson, thanks for your report. Just to curiosity, the ballistic vests that are taken out of service, is there something that's done with those to help somebody else, maybe?
Yes, and I'm happy that you asked that question. So here's the thing, after five years, would they maybe stop a bullet? They might, but we go with the expiration because we budget for that, but, you know, a lot of it depends on, you know, the where, you know, they can, you know, if someone works day shift and they're sweating, or how often you, you know, wash the outer cover, but at any rate, yes, they probably would provide some detection, or some protection. So Lucas Keen, one of our detectives, who used to be the quartermaster, so he has a program, and I can't remember the acronym, but yes, our old vests, when we get, I don't know, 15, or when we get a quantity of those, we will donate them. There's something that we sign, you know, protecting us from liability because there are a lot of small departments that have no vests, or officers are required to buy their own, so they don't. So the thinking is, it's better than nothing. So yeah, we do donate them. So I'm happy you asked that, I should have included that in this update.
Oh, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I have a question for you about Halloween coming up, and if there tends to be any, like, traffic accidents with all the kids in the streets, or if you have any safety tips?
You know, we really haven't, luckily. We usually have extra officers out on foot. I would just say, I mean, parents, I definitely, with the smaller kids, I would accompany your children. You know, costumes, especially for the smaller ones, have some kind of maybe bright or reflective, you know, colors on, you know, just safety crossing streets, just kind of the basic, you know, safety rules. Like I said, we will have extra officers out on foot, for sure. Don't eat candy until they bring it home, and let parents check it out. At our police department lobby, you know, if anyone wants to bring candy in, we can, you know, look through it or do that, but just kind of the basic rules. But yeah, fortunately, we, I can't remember any accidents or anything, so I know the past few years, we've had, besides on foot, officers, Phoenix and Broadway seem to be very heavily traveled, and then, you know, some like Alworth and sometimes Kalamazoo Street, so some of the more heavily traveled areas will have a patrol car maybe sit or crew slowly just to kind of remind people. And we have a nice new speed trailer sign with a message sign that, I'm sure we can move that around a little bit, but yeah, we're fortunate, we haven't had anything like a karyash yet been, so.
Thank you.
One last question. It's a real sore point for a lot of residents, is noise. In a summer, especially when we have a lot of tourists and people are outside, you always get, especially Monroe Boulevard, and I'm sure there's other streets, loud, loud cars, loud motorcycles, loud people with a car with... loud motorcycles, loud people with a car with a roof down or a motorcycle now with radios blasting. When they go by, you can hear them two, three blocks away. Do we have, and maybe this is a Kate question, do we have any kind of inordinates, any kind of restrictions on noise? Because it is so loud, and it's, as bad as it is here occasionally, I've been to cities where it's ten times worse. But do we have anything that restricts that?
Yeah, and, you know, everyone, we've talked about the noise ordinance with the decibel meters for, like, businesses that are stationary. But we actually, there is a very specific ordinance for loud music from a motor vehicle. And that is, you don't need a decibel. That's actually a very, more easily enforceable ordinance. That is audible music from a motor vehicle. It's a city ordinance. So, that is, that's a ticket that's a little bit easier to write without devices. So, basically, I have it in front of me, but it's like, you can hear it from a hundred feet, and that's something that the officer can write. They can hear it, they don't even need a witness. So, that's something, if you could call it in, even if you don't have the license plate, you know, there's a silver motorcycle just went south on Monroe Boulevard, you know, if the officer can find it or hear it. But, yeah, there is a specific ordinance that's different from the noise ordinance. It's loud music from a motor vehicle. That, in my opinion, it's much easier to write a ticket for. And the, and just, you know, with the other, you know, loud equipment, like a loud muffler, you know, some of those motorcycles, it's not maybe defective equipment. It's, they're just loud, but, you know, some of those, we can still write, you know, loud exhaust, or especially on a car, you know, they have no muffler. So, there's also defective equipment tickets for just equipment that is loud. But, and specifically to music from a motor vehicle, that is, we have a separate ordinance that specifically pertains to that.
Thanks, I didn't know that.
Yep.
I'll just say, good work Sergeant Hathaway on the, good to know we have another grant writer in the organization. And then just to you and your staff, as always, thank you for putting on those vests and risking your lives every single day for everybody in this town. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful night. We are at that point where citizens of the audience may speak on items not on the agenda, and if you have anything you'd like to talk about, come on up. You'll have up to five minutes, state your name and address.
Joe Wilkins, eight-eleven Indiana Street. Just point of recognition, just to comment real quick on what Councilman Reiser mentioned, I tend to, that's the beauty of South Haven in the summertime, you get people to want to visit. You have motorcycles coming through, different cars, and people show off their vehicles. And I know we have to have some type of law and order, but, yeah, I think we, you know, you can over-police too sometimes, I think. That's just the beauty of South Haven for me, when those, when you see these nice made motorcycles that come in, that people put a lot of money and time into, and they have a nice stereo system on it. I mean, what is that really doing to you when they pass by for about thirty seconds? To me, it's just, you know, I just want to make this point. In the last three years, our country has gone through a lot. And we've seen a lot, we've experienced a lot. This council have to deal with a lot of issues that are important to residents. And it's been a lot of stuff going back and forth. But on that note, I think a lot of times, buried underneath all that, we forget as residents, when you listen to the news of what's going on around us in other cities, we forget how blessed we are to live in South Haven. And I just want to stand and let, just pause a minute to reflect on how blessed we are. And I think, to me, a lot of that is, has to do with the residents here in South Haven. I hear a lot of times from different people that I know in other areas, not far from here, forty minutes from here, they're getting killings, shootings, all the time. A lot of people don't feel safe in their own backyards. I can say that that's not the case. That's not the case with me, and it's not the case with a lot of people that I know. So, a lot of times, we forget that. The little things of how blessed we are to live in this area. And so, and a lot of that is because of, I think, the leadership that we have here, and the leadership that we have with Chief Thompson and Police Department. When she came on board, she always encouraged the police neighborhood relationship. And I saw the Police Department do a turnaround and really grow in that aspect. And so, I personally want to thank her. She didn't ask me. I want to thank her for her leadership. I think her leadership is what, the reason why we have officers doing what they do, is because she fostered that type of leadership and will to want to help people and make the department better. So, I want to thank her for her effort. I do feel safe. When I left the military, I wanted to, I could have ended up a lot of places, but I wanted to come back to South Haven because South Haven, to me, was a place that you could feel safe. It was home. You didn't have to worry about a lot of the high crimes and, you know, a lot of things that we hear about and see on the news. We have not been a victim to that type of mentality. And so, we haven't had, and I, and, you know, knock on wood, thank God, we haven't had that. But I think it has a lot to do with the people that reside in this area, with the city government and with the Police Department and everybody that works on the front line to help keep this place safe. And I think sometimes we forget about that. And so, I want to just say that when we push for these different things and we have all these different disagreements, just remember that we are blessed to live in South Haven. We don't have to deal with a lot of stuff that other city and city officials are trying to get past. Thank you.
Agreed, thank you. Anybody else?
Mary Hasley, seven-sixth North Shore Drive. I'd like to echo Professor Wilkins' comments with regard to Chief Thompson. Found her very helpful. And also want to reiterate that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And towards that end, The Lodge, one of our favorite locations, is hosting an event. Ten percent of sales on Thursday, October twentieth, are being donated to Coral Lamping Center, which helps survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault. So, you get to enjoy a great meal and help survivors in the process. Towards the We're in Purple Domestic Violence Coalition out of Paw Paw is on October twentieth having a competition for Wear Purple. Take your photos and mail them to them, and you'll be entered into a drawing for bagels and coffee. And they are separately having, and I'll give this to Kate, a fundraiser for a Night of Laughs on November third. So, the headliner is Brian Atkins. So, hopefully, people can attend that. And then on to some more specific things for the city. So, just going through budgets, trying to find some things, and a couple of things caught my eye. And I was just curious, it appears we're still paying Republic Services a fair amount of money in 2022. I know that there were some leftover, or it appeared there were some leftover money owed from November 2021. But I was just curious what services they're currently providing. Search of the invoices indicated that there was over $64,000 paid to Republic in 2022. So, it would be nice to understand what services they're providing, now that our private services for private homes is, was Best Way. And with regard to budget, the summary that was in the packet, I found a little confusing. So, I was just looking at some things in the legal realm, and I note from the yearly or the annual budget approval, I think $280,000 was budgeted for legal expenses with a quarter being $70,000. And if I've added up the right fees for the right firms that would fall under general legal, we're over-budget for that. And looking at some averages for quarterly, we're over for that even more so on a quarterly basis. And just the month of October had a significant increase in attorney fees and over-budget. So, what is going to be done to make sure that our budget isn't significantly over-budgeted by the end of the fiscal year, considering we're just into the first quarter? There's a lot of months left to go. And towards just general compliance with things, I just need to read the bylaws of the Planning Commission with regard to, and this is a general item, it's not specific, it applies across the board. For public hearings conducted by the Commission shall be run in an orderly and timely fashion. This shall be accomplished by the following procedure. There's one, two, three, four. Number five, during the hearing, the chairperson shall acknowledge any correspondence received. This can be worked in between public comments. Now, my interpretation means that any written correspondence needs to be acknowledged on the record, and that it really should be done during that topic, such that it's brought up at a timely manner so that it can be part of the consideration of the public hearing on which they're voting. What I am seeing is that there's a laundry list given at the start of the meeting of the Planning Commission, and it's, identified what the topic is. It's not, I don't believe, always associated with the agenda topic. And so, although there can be some discretion, I think, of the chair, I think that this is indiscretion and that I certainly hope future meetings are held more properly by the bylaws.
Okay, thanks. Reliable, that's downtown?
I will check and see what those bills are for. I'm not prepared to answer that right now.
Okay, that's fair. That's good. That takes us to your comments. Oh, sorry, was there anybody else? Sorry, I didn't see anybody. Sorry, sorry. Go.
So, I'll make this very brief. I did want to give an update on Overton. I wasn't sure if I mentioned last meeting, but the Habitat Company has made a timely application to the Lytec program under MISHDA, and it was received. So, that has been done. So, right now, we're in the waiting period to find out if that application will be accepted. I'm sorry, not accepted, but if that, if that application will be awarded, or if there's further information or whatnot. So, it's in the running as we speak, so we'll be getting more updates for council. So, there's that on the Overton. Two, as you can hear from most of this meeting, it's been quite a stormy, windy day. So, if anyone is out there that has storm damage, they've got some downed branches, please call Public Works, six-three-seven-zero-seven-three-seven. We can come out and pick those up for residents. Lastly, House Bill four-seven-two-two, we know that there is quite a bit of opposition from this body to having that legislation passed because we don't feel that a one-size-fits-all approach for short-term rentals works, and that we very much want to contain local control as we've kind of maintained all this time, that what works in South Haven may not work in any other community. So, we have to figure out what this community wants to regulate and how they want to regulate that. I've circulated a letter of opposition urging Governor Whitmer that should this legislation come to her jester, that she not sign it. It's pretty much based on our previous correspondence to the House and the Senate with some Meyer tweaks. I think I've sent that all out to you. With the approval of this body, I'll be sending that out to the governor's office because we know that lame duck is just around the corner. Those are my comments, except I did want to kind of speak to Wendy. I know we, whenever we talk about trick-or-treaters, we want to say a couple of things. Be smart, be safe, and be seen. That's the big one. So, we want to make sure that kids are being seen, so. And we have a happy holiday, trick-or-treating on Monday, the 31st. Thanks, those are my comments.
Thank you. Council comments? I'll start with Joe. Good evening.
The only comment I have, it's really related to staff, is on the revenue and expenditure report, you've got a column that says year-to-date balance nine-thirty, then you compare it to the whole year of '22, '23, and then you show a variance. Variance really doesn't mean anything because you have to really compare, you need another column that says year-to-date '21 compared to year-to-date '22. Then we would really see how we're doing year-to-date. So, I would suggest we put another column. It wouldn't be hard because if not, it skews it, showing almost like a negative in operating revenue, and we might be year-to-date ahead of last year. So, that would be helpful. And the only other thing I would like to know, on all the legal fees that we spent money on, what percentage that is in general funds that we're spending it on, and what percentage tied into short-term rental? This was brought up once before, that I was told any time our lawyer, Nick, discusses anything to do with short-term rental, that time and that expenditure goes into a bucket in your accounting that says that's money spent for short-term rentals, which the taxpayer should recoup from the businesses, meaning the short-term rental businesses. So, I'd like to see where we're at year-to-date on how much money that we've paid for legal fees have gone to that bucket. Because it's, it seems like it would be sizable, but I don't know because I don't see those numbers. If you could give that to council, or at least to myself, I'd like to say it.
Thank you, that's all.
George? Just want to thank everyone that came here today and gave us comments, and thank you all who are watching because you didn't want to brave the elements and come here in person. We appreciate you also. Thank you.
Just on the topic of our trash service, I can't remember if it was an email or online or somewhere else, but I know someone threw out the idea of checking to see if Best Way could do like driveway service, if that was an opt-in, like, extra thing that could be good, since we do have an aging population and then a lot of, you know, rentals and second homeowners. I don't know if that's anything that we could ask Best Way or look into.
I know we have a contract with them. I'm not sure we want to renegotiate that, but that would be something we can ask about. But not every person may take that up, and we probably don't want to spread it around the population. But we can check in to see if that's even on the table. I know that Republic would do that, but they would not charge necessarily for it. I can tell you right now, Best Way will charge for it.
Okay. Yeah, I was thinking, if it was just an opt-in thing that could get some of the garbage bins out of the way and, you know.
Sounds like an opportunity for a budding entrepreneur in high school or middle school, middle schooler to make a little fortune on hauling garbage cans.
Yeah. And then just a second thing, I think that we said we were going to do like a water safety assessment sometime in the fall? Okay. Cool, thank you.
My comment, speaking of ingenious or motivated kids, the last high school football game is this Friday, playing Camels United, so your last chance to come see the Purple Pride marching band and the football team. But that's just good news because that means that the winter sports are about to get rolling, so we'll have plenty more things for you to do to support our kids. That's my comment.
There we go. Ms. Wildens?
Geez, don't talk about winter already. I just want to say thanks to everyone who came out tonight, all your comments, and thanks for that great report from Chief Thompson. Job well done. Thank you.
Very good. I will echo that. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Kate, can we write a letter or call or both to the Road Commission on the lack of stripes on Blue Star Highway? It's like gotten beyond time to put those stripes on there. And also, just for fun, let them know that the corner of M-140 and Blue Star was, we believe, hand-stripped by someone who had some fun with a green spray paint. The three arrows were, and that's been missing at least two years. Be nice if they could get the straight left-right because I'm sick of having a drag race when the people pull up next to me and they don't know what to do. And we're kind of trying to see who's going to win the battle down there, down to the curb end or not the curb end, sorry, The Lodge. That was another question, but I can probably wait on it. I'll wait on it. Let's go. Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned?
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye, we're adjourned. Thanks, all.